Before we start this meeting tonight, is there someone in the audience that would like to offer a prayer? Anybody in the audience want to offer a prayer? Mr. Rodarte, will you offer the prayer, please?
Sure. Father, we come before you this evening. We bless your holy name, Father, and we thank you for this great community that we live in. We pray that you bless us and give us wisdom and bless our community and keep our citizens safe. We pray, Father God, that you bring to us wisdom so we can make good decisions that bless our citizens and take care of our community. Thank you, Father. Amen.
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 I want to call this meeting to order right now, straight up and down at 6:00 P.M. Roll call.
Mayor Hicks.
Present.
Counselor Rodarte.
Present.
Counselor Garcia.
Present.
Counselor Lucero.
Here.
Counselor Padilla.
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. Does that take you? That's so those people out there can see what we're seeing over there. Approval of the agenda?
I'll make the motion that we approve the agenda as is.
Second.
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 Counselor Garcia. Hello? Yes, sir. Oh.
Yes.
Counselor Padilla.
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte.
Yes.
Great. Citizens to address the council, first one on the list is Representative Harry Garcia.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, councilors, ladies and gentlemen. The reason I'm here today is I'm concerned about this ordinance 20-1243 on the tenant vacant buildings. I'm not completely aware of what's going on with it as far as right now. I just got wind to it. But I hear that there's gonna be, that we have to register vacant and empty buildings. And I don't know what they call, what do you consider vacant and empty? You know, as you well know, Mayor and councilors, this town is about half vacant.
Harry, the other night when I came in from work, starting at McDonald's, I started counting buildings to where I turned on MacArthur to go to my house, 43. That doesn't include First Street, Second Street, Downing Country, that other end of the town, all the houses on Sage that are empty where we're doing our project down there. This town is, we're getting boarded up back.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that. And, you know, I'm a property owner here in Grants and I have quite a few properties. And, you know, some of my buildings are vacant and I know some of them need to, need attention. But even with that said, you know, half these people in here that do have buildings in here, either they can't afford to spruce them up because they're empty, number one. Number two, you can't rent to people that are not here. And, you know, this is a big issue. You know, to some people, $150 registration for every year, I don't know what that's all about. Because we already pay taxes on these buildings. You know, I paid taxes to the county for all my properties. And now you're gonna charge me another $150 for, because it's vacant? And what do you consider vacant? You know, my garage has been down there since 1973. It's empty now. And it's empty due to the fact what's happening in our community is hurting everybody. You know, I'm not exempt. I'm a representative and I'm feeling it too. You know, I have a lot of properties vacant. And by adding more salt to injury, that's not helping anybody. That's hurting people. And we cannot afford to be imposing these kinds of things on people that have no fault of their own on it. You know, and if we're gonna target, this is a commercial businesses, well then the next thing we're gonna do is we're gonna target our residential. Half this town is empty. You know, we cannot go this route. You know, and I'm very, I'm not upset, but, you know, some of this stuff, people aren't even aware about it.
I'm against it. I'll say that right now. I'm against it.
Because, you know, you know, I have a building that's a eyesore. I know it. And if they address it to me that I need to take care of it, that's what I'll do. But some of these people here cannot afford to address, do these things, you know? And it's just impossible. We're putting a big burden on our community that we don't need right now. Because we're already at the bottom of the totem pole. You know, we're, I know it, I hear it, I talk to the mayor, we discuss issues that what we need to do. We're trying to work a little bit at a time, you know, like we're trying to work on First Street now, the Washington Bridge, Second Street, you know, the football stadium. You know, we're trying to get up ahead of ourselves. But by imposing stuff on people that can't afford it, we're hurting ourselves. We're going backwards on this stuff. And I know the city's hurting for money too. Everybody's hurting right now. But by taking somebody else's money to, from taking from this pocket to put in this pocket, we're going backwards. You know, Mayor and City Council, you know, you really need to think about this issue. Because like I said, to be an unfair or bear, $100 might not be much. But to this other person here, it's a matter of, do we need or we don't need? And keep it in mind, councilor, Mr. Mayor, council people, it's not the people's fault. You know, this virus is not helping anybody. It's hurt, the whole world has been hurt. And by doing, imposing bills on other people is not, not a good deal. Just keep that in mind. Because at the end of the day, we'll figure out what we need to do and it'll go over, we'll be all right. We cannot impose these things on people. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council. Appreciate the time. It's an honor being here.
Thank you very much.
What, what is the $150 fee for? Does anybody know?
It's supposed to be a kind of a deterrent so that people, it's not profitable to keep your building empty. So it's a way to try to encourage people to get their buildings leased or sold or filled and something operational in there. That's the purpose of the fee.
Well, we already charge them when they register, when they have a business. We charge and then we're gonna charge them again. We're gonna penalize them. To me, that seems like a penalty. Penalizing them for having a closed business.
Well, you know, and here's the way I feel about it, guys. What's happening right now in this country and across this world, it's God doing this. And these people that are leaving our town, how are we gonna fill the building when we ain't got nobody to rent anything?
The process for the vacant building started way before the COVID. It's a recommendation that was given to us from the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Group that came in and gave us some recommendations on how to revitalize downtown. And that was the big concern that keeps coming up is all the boarded up buildings and that are unsightly. And so when people come to town, that's the first thing they see. So it was recommended and we have a committee that's been working. So this idea to do the vacant building, we researched what other communities do. And it came up way before COVID. So you may be right, Harry, maybe this isn't the best time. The purpose for the registration fee has nothing to do with trying to make money for the city. It's more of a, not a penalty, but a deterrent. So if you have to pay every year to leave a building vacant, you're gonna try, work harder to get it filled, is the concept.
Mr. Mayor? With all due respect, Mr. City Manager, by imposing a fine on somebody to spruce up a building, as you said, people are not doing it because they can't rent them. You know, people are not coming into this town right now. And I know there's a lot of eyesores in this town. But by imposing a penalty on people, we're not going nowhere with it. We're hurting people. And there's people here that have quite a few pieces of property that it's gonna come in to thousands of dollars for them. You know, not a hundred, thousands, okay? And you're not gonna go spend $50,000 on a building you can't rent. It's just not gonna happen right now. And I know that it's not the COVID. This has been like this for quite a while. But by doing this at this time, in our society, what we're going through, it's just really bad timing. And it's gonna hurt people. And, you know, to me, it's an unfair deal to even break it up right now. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Harry.
Is it safe to consider that maybe we can waive, waive a fee? You know, if they, if they come in and clean up their yards, make it at least decent, you know, pulling weeds and making their property look a little bit decent instead of, you know, looking trashy and whatever. I know, you know, it's gonna cost to paint and redo a home, but at least pull weeds around the house, make it look decent. I think if we can maybe consider waiving a fee, that might help this year.
This is for basically commercial buildings.
Oh, commercial. We have any commercial buildings. There's a lot of weeds.
Yeah. And when I came through town, the other night, I think it was Thursday night, whatever night it was that I was working, I came through and I started looking, because I just wanted to count them. And most of them don't look bad. They're just boarded up and closed because there's no business. They don't look bad on Main Street here. It's when you get into the town. When you get down on Sage where we're doing that project, the Washington Bridge, on the north side of Sage, we've got five empty homes that the weeds are 10 feet tall. And we got eight vacant apartment buildings that are just destroyed, basically being gutted, all on that side of the road there. I mean, but I agree with Harry. Now is not the time to be imposing any kind of penalty on anybody unless it's a criminal penalty.
Well, Laura, you stated that this is just basically just a recommendation, right?
Yes. Yes. It was a recommendation that came out of the Metropolitan Redevelopment Area Plan that we've been working on for a couple of years now, trying to revitalize downtown.
Yeah. Does it show anywhere that this works?
I think that that recommendation would best fit a community that is vibrant and is growing. And this, this community's not growing at all. So I don't think it would fit us at all.
Go ahead, Eric.
So we all cruise through our town, right? Has anybody, does any of the audience, they have businesses in Gallup? Anybody? Businesses in Gallup? They're a lot stricter than us. They make you business owners, they make sure you have signages, they make sure your stuff is sealed, painted, handicapped. We're very lenient here in our community and I think this is for a reason. This is, I had a developer come through the other day, met up with me, cruised through downtown, seen a lot of properties. And I'm not gonna tell you what he said, but it's not attractive to people to come in. This is not attractive. So if you all have a property out there that's a business, clean it up. It's very simple. Get a shovel, get a weed eater, grab some stuff, clean it up. Our community is looking like the way it's looking because we don't take care of it. We don't enforce anything. Gallup enforces so much, I had to pay extra $25,000 just to open up a business on Gallup because they enforce it. Do I want to go that crazy? Probably not. But I say we need to start somewhere. Cleaning up stuff doesn't really cost them a whole hell of a lot. I purchased the old Lear's Nursery. Cost me, actually cost me quite a bit to clean it up. But it's cleaned up. It's not an eyesore no more. If you have a business out there, I recommend that you do your part for our community and get it cleaned up.
Ronnie Pines.
Thank you. My name's Ronnie Pines. I'm not gonna spend a lot of time repeating what's already been covered. I laid my notes down when I came up to sign up. I think Harry read my notes. I'm not sure. With that, I thank you, Laura. One of my first questions was where the idea came from. And so thank you for answering that. I would, I would assume this is an entity that's not from Grants. They don't live here. They don't maintain property here. So we paid for that recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
They looked at several communities and what they did to get their buildings repaired and in good shape. One of the communities, I believe, was Silver City. That's very similar to our size. There are several across the state that have vacant building ordinances.
Okay. Thank you. The other comment right quick, so I don't forget addressing what, to the, to the city councilors have commented. We have, you know, we're talking about weeds and cleanup versus a vacant building. Those are apples and oranges, I'm sorry. We have ordinances to keep weeds and keep clean. And that's not the same as having a vacant building that you can't lease or rent, as Mr. Garcia. I have my name on the front of these buildings in public for the world to see and everybody else. I'm on LoopNet. And as Mr. Garcia very, very well put it, it's hard to rent to people who aren't interested in coming to Grants. Be happy to try to invest money into buildings and facilities. If there's any way they would come and stay and do business here. I would love to have the problem that Gallup has, Eric. If we had the economy base that Gallup has, I wouldn't be here. We wouldn't be talking about vacant buildings. So they're not apples and apples. So those are things that just brought to my mind. I'm very much opposed to this, just for the record. I also do not think it's the time, right time or place to invoke these. And as Mr. Garcia mentioned, if you're gonna do this on vacant commercial, then why don't we do it across the board to homeowners? You know, are you just gonna discriminate on, on commercial buildings and not apply it to the whole city? If you get the commercial buildings to look nice and leave the cities, you know, off this list, what does that mean? It doesn't help a lot. So anyway, those are my comments. I'm very much opposed. I don't, I've kind of stepped back of this declaration that's called, this is declared a public nuisance. I never considered myself or our property being public nuisance. We like to contribute to the economy, given the chance. But at this point, with the economy as we all know it, there's not too many opportunities out here, guys. And I'm not crying boo hoo. But I'd sure oppose to this. So thank you.
Have any of you guys talked to any of the real estate people that are coming through town, already that work in town and saying how, that there's people coming in? They want to spend the money here. And one of the biggest things they have is, you know, they, they go through our town and look at it all, what's vacant and what's trashed. And if you're proud of that, I don't know what to tell you. But it's not a community where I want to live in. Look, you have the chief back there. I know he wants to talk about vacant and whatnot and all these buildings, these properties that they break into, they start fires, they do whatever in there. I don't know. I don't think that's something that we want to pursue.
Anybody else? C.L. Peterson. Welcome, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you. Thank you for your attention, councilors, Madam Manager, Mr. Mayor, and fellow citizens. I have a couple of things I'd like to ask about. One is, I was recently approached by someone who asked, does the city know that the public is not allowed access to the new track and field at the high school? Where they used to be able to get in and walk? And I said, I didn't realize that. I would ask you, bring it to your attention. Now, I contacted someone at the high school and some teachers are given permission to use the track to walk during their prep periods. And I was also told they have three security guards at the high school, but no students. So they wondered, couldn't the security guards probably rotate? And someone be at the track early in the morning or in the evening? In case there is dog feces or whatever? I don't know. That seemed to be the concern. So I'm sure you know a lot more about this than I, but I wanted to bring it to your attention. The next item I would like to bring to your attention is the condition of the pond that is the home to some ducks and geese.
Which pond? Which pond?
I think it's the one over by the gazebo.
Okay.
Yes. Several citizens are concerned on the quality of the water and rushes and reeds are, have been pulled out to avoid the animals from nesting. And at one time, there were four geese. Now there are two. The latest batches of ducklings are not surviving. And these citizens are wondering, is there any way a fence could be put around that with a gate? Because it seems like the public is bringing in animals. And these citizens are concerned that maybe the animals are, are the ones who are chasing and killing the ducks. I don't know. But I bring it to your attention.
The fence, that's a fishing pond.
Yes.
Okay. We put fish in there. If we put a fence around it, no one's gonna be able to fish that pond.
If there's a gate?
I mean, how are you talking? You're talking about putting around that whole pond? I mean, there's bridges that cross it.
I'm just passing along there.
I mean, that was designed so that it would be open, fishing, for people to just go and have fun.
Right.
I don't.
Maybe the ducks and geese can be relocated. I don't know.
Well, the ducks are gonna go where they want to go. They're down there by Mesa View and the ditch back behind there. So are their geese.
I didn't know.
I mean, they're gonna go, they're wild. We don't control them. They're gonna go wherever they want to go.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
I mean, we don't, we didn't buy them and we didn't put them there.
They just made themselves.
They made their own cells there. Okay, so.
Thank you.
And that's the way it's always been, along with the geese too.
Okay. But it is quite a tourist draw. You can often find people down there.
And that's why we did the Riverwalk Trail, shooting off of it and going down the back. It's all, it's all about attracting people to the town.
Yes. Yes.
Ma'am, Mark, Teshma, and I looked at a couple of things and we have some ideas for the, for the ducks as far as maybe we can put some rocks out there a little bit so we can get them nesting away from the shoreline or back in the back corner where it was kinda, they had to clean that up because it was just nasty. So we're gonna clean it up and hopefully we can, we're gonna build something where hopefully they can nest out in the water. So, you know, dogs or cats or whatever can't get to them. But the work is in progress. Yes, the ducks are, I mean, they're pretty. And we want to keep them here. And so, and I do know that I walk around there and there's, there's some that are dead here and there. And I think that's just some, just dogs, dogs that are, but as far as them, I think getting them a proper home so maybe they can nest easier and maybe stay a little bit longer. But we're kicking around a few ideas. I went up to Colorado, looked at a few places and it's a simple fix, but take a little bit of work.
In the country of Iceland, they take old tires and put those along the shorelines and stuff hay and straw, whatever. And the eider ducks in that country really love those.
Cool.
Yes.
Thank you, ma'am.
And the last item on the agenda. I have noticed that south of the tracks here in Grants, there are a lot of dead trees. And I don't know what the maintenance man's schedule is like, but perhaps we could add it to their list of things to do is to go through the southern part of the city and.
Are you talking San Jose Drive?
I think it's by the railroad tracks, right? Behind the main businesses on Santa Fe. Yes.
And maybe, and maybe they already have it on their to-do list. I don't know.
They do. Periodically, we go through there and that is on their list.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you very much for listening.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Barbara Wesley.
Mayor Hicks, Councilon, City Manager, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to share with you the report on the Animal Care Center. And this is for four months, April through July. We had a total of 551 dogs and cats, primarily dogs, sheltered at the Animal Care Center. So if this is for four months, we'd have over 2,000 in a year or more. 102 were adopted, 308 were transported. We had 260 strays. And that also includes those that surrendered their dogs. We had a huge population of mother pup, mother dogs with all their pups. And some of them had six and eight and 12 puppies. And so we were able to transport a lot of those, in fact, all of them out. We transport to Arizona, we transport to Colorado, we've even gone as far as Oregon or Washington State. And the real problem is this is expensive for our community. It's a big, big budget problem. And if it weren't for people like Carolyn Newton and various others that have worked tirelessly to help coordinate transports, go and clean, do all these things that need to be done at the Animal Care Center, it would be even worse. Spay and neuter is the solution to this. Because most of these, before we can even send them out, they have to have all of their shots, they have to be healthy. Carolyn Newton has, has worked tirelessly to raise money for those that come to the shelter sick. And so they can be adopted out. Another concern I have is that when Sydney Reynolds was one of our councilperson, she worked for over two years working on an ordinance, she and Sherry both. She did a lot of research, checking out communities that had successful ordinances for animal care and animal control. And that has been submitted to the city months ago. In fact, it's probably been over a year. We no longer have a copy of that because our copy went to the city. So we don't even have a copy any longer. But we could solve some of this problem if the city council would say, yes, we're gonna work on this and we're gonna solve the problem. So what I would like to see is that we really get behind spaying and neutering because we have a lot of strays. When we look at 260 strays that were picked up in this four-month period, that's a lot of strays. Many of them are not socialized. Yes, sir?
Are they coming more from county, city? Where are they, where is the most coming from?
The city is the biggest contributor. The city is the biggest contributor to the problem.
The next largest section is countywide. We get a lot coming in from Pine Hill, Laguna, some from Akama. There's quite a lot coming in from county.
Are our animal control officers picking these dogs up in the city? Is that what you're telling me?
I beg your pardon?
Are our animal control officers picking these dogs up in the city?
Yes.
Okay, so these 241 were picked up by our animal control officers?
I can't, I didn't separate it out that way. I just came up with the total. Now, that's, that brings up another concern that I have is that we have a turnover of animal control officers. It's a dirty, dirty, filthy job.
Barbara, before you go any further, we got a turnover problem in the city of Grants. Our turnover rate for 2019 is like 44 percent. It's not just at the Animal Care Center. It might even be 50 percent.
I appreciate your comment. But I think that this needs to be known that, I know that Chief is out there many mornings at 5:00, starting to clean the cages at 5:00 in the morning. I would challenge any of you to go and spend a day working out there, just to see what goes on and what they have to do. When they're called out, they never know if there's going to be a dangerous thing that they're going to have to face. So I want to thank you so much for giving me this opportunity to share this with you. And I'd ask you, please, to take a look at that ordinance. And if you could even share back a copy with Sherry or with Carolyn Newton or myself so that we can take a look at it, because we do not have privy to that ordinance at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara. Give him a copy of that to the, Aaron Dean, he stepped out?
Can't leave.
He had the buggy?
Can't leave.
Okay. Public discussion of the Charter of Compliance. Anybody out there want to say we're in compliance or out of compliance? It's been in and out so many times since I've been here. It's bittiful. Period. We are in compliance, guys, and we have been for some time. And another thing for the record, we're not required to read anything into the record, okay? That's not a violation of our charter. So let me make that perfectly clear. Okay. Approval of regular city council meeting minutes?
Yeah, I approve the regular city council minutes for 7:27.
Second.
Second.
Counselor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Counselor Lucero?
Yes.
Counselor Padilla?
Yes.
Counselor Rodarte?
Yes.
Approval of the special city council meeting minutes for 8:10.
I approve the city council. I approve the city council special meeting on 8:10.
Second.
I'll second it.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Pavia?
Yes.
Councilor Rodarte?
Yes.
Ordinance number 221243, unattended, vacant buildings. I'm against this, guys, at this time. I would entertain a table, but you guys give the vote, not me. So, make a motion or let it die, whatever you guys wanna do.
I think we've had plenty of discussion already on this. I make a motion that we table this issue onto, down the road sometime.
Second.
I'll second.
Councilor Garcia?
No.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Pavia?
Yes.
Councilor Rodarte?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Resolution 201686, New Mexico DOT LGF Agreement.
In January, Mayor, Council, Manager, in January, we requested 250,000 for Washington Avenue Design, knowing that that was gonna be the next phase in our drainage project. We just were about to complete Jefferson. They're doing the Washington Bridge now. We got the money, but then they took the money. That's just how it happens. The governor had to cut some expenses, Washington Bridge, I mean, Washington Avenue Drainage was one of the projects. However, we did receive funding for other projects, so I don't wanna make it look bad. Anyway, knowing that, right after that, local government applications were open at the DOT. We applied and we were awarded 196,000 with a 25% match. So, it's about 50,000 city, 200,000 from the state. It's not budgeted for this year, the match. However, we could include it in next year's because this funding agreement is good for two years and it'll easily be extended. And that kinda fits into our long-term planning. We wanna design next year, hopefully construct in 2022.
Did everybody on the council get the letter from Mr. Pines about the property?
Yeah.
So, we all got that, right? So, we know that these flooding projects over there are dead?
What do you mean that?
Without the exchange of the property, how do we move forward?
Well, this one is for.
No, I understand what this one is, Derek. I get this one. I'm talking about future. Future plans around.
But we're talking about this right?
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure you guys got the letter and that you're aware that all the flooding projects down around Mesa View and future foundations are dead. Go ahead.
This, I'm sorry, just to, this funding is specifically for the drainage on Washington?
Yes.
I know what you're talking about, the ponds, which is about the biosystem. It's relative, but not exactly tied to this money. But I know where you're coming from.
Donald, is there any danger that that money will be taken away again?
No, this is actually, that was a capital outlay request, like our request to Mr. Garcia or Clemente. Those, this was DOT funding. We applied for it. We were awarded. So, it's, it's not, it can't be vetoed. So, anyway, my recommendation, my request is you approve it and the recommendation that you approve.
So, we have 25% match, is that what you say?
Which is 49,000 and some change.
It won't change, Donald.
What's that?
Let's say it's 49,000 this year. It won't change it for next year?
No, no, it stays the same. Just for example, a couple of the other agreements that we've had with DOT, I mean, we've extended them three times. Not that you want to, but we don't have to finish a project in 2021. We have time in regard to looking at the.
So that we can budget?
Yes, exactly.
So, we can budget next year?
So, this little piece of the pie, what does it do for the long-term goal?
This is another phase, 'cause we all know the next phases include ponds and ecosystem behind Mesa View. That's a long-term plan. This one is, is we done Jefferson. This is Washington. And the next phase is a biosystem, the bio park, of which we've applied for a grant.
Is $200,000 gonna get it done, Donald? Washington's a long ways.
Just the design.
Just the design.
This is planning and design.
Donald.
Yeah, 'cause Jefferson costs $2 million.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
But this little section at the Y eventually ties into the project that potentially could be, oh, no, this one is the project that's gonna go all the way to Andaman.
Correct.
Where that house got burnt.
Yes.
Oh, so that's gonna help with the flooding, at least right there.
Correct.
So, then when they build a new school, that's all gonna tie in and it's gonna look more attractive for our community.
Yeah, one of the things, one of the scopes in this design is to include the water runoff from the new school. So, we're collaborating with the school and we're getting their plans. We're getting our plans so we can make sure the drainage could suffice for the area.
Most of the drainage that comes out from the north, it's already been taken care of for the, down the Jefferson project, bigger culvert sizes. So, this one is just basically a little bit coming off the south, the school, whatnot?
The high school area, coming down that area, 'cause Jefferson's pretty much taking care of the north end, west-north, that runoff from the Mesas. This one is more toward the west side, Mesa coming down. You know how in the high school, all the water comes down that side?
And the west end of Mesa View Elementary typically floods in that annex.
Well, according to the plans, Mesa View is gonna be relocated further east, right?
Yes, it's gonna be over towards future foundations where the playground is now. Yes.
That's what I understand also.
Will that help alleviate some of the flooding there?
Well, I'm sure the school's gonna be built like Los Alamos, about 10 foot higher.
Bringing dirt.
Yeah, it's crazy. They're gonna bring in a lot of dirt. So, the school will be out of the floodplain because it's gonna be 10 foot higher.
But the residents right there, it's gonna benefit them galore, like.
They might reuse the secularist boulevard again, are they?
There, just, there's no drainage on Washington now, none.
Yeah.
So, this is gonna include drainage, which, of which, on Jefferson, we've already added a 36-inch pipe underground that's gonna happen, and there was a 6-inch pipe.
And this is a planning phase for hopefully maybe two or three years down the road?
Hopefully, construction in 2022. We'll apply for next year for construction. We'll be doing that. While it's under design.
Thank you.
It's a pleasure, Council.
I make a motion that we approve Resolution 20-1686.
Second.
Second.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Pavia?
Yes.
Councilor Rodarte?
Yes.
Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan.
Okay, this is just information only at this point. Next month, I will come to you guys for final approval of the city's ICIP, Infrastructure Capital Improvement Plan. This year's plan is for years 22 through 2026. It's a five-year plan. Just like a home, it's simple. You're just planning ahead. That's all it is, is a planning document. So, I basically interview you guys, community leaders, department heads, and what are your priorities? I compile a list of top 10 of what I feel is best without my input. Try, trying to stay away from that, bring it to you guys for final approval and that's, that's what's recorded on the state's.
That's a wish list?
What's that?
That's a wish list?
Well, it used to be referred to as a wish list.
Actually, it was a wish list. Now, it's actually turning into a plan where they actually fund us by the plan and what's happening. That's one of the things that's changed since Harry got over there. Instead of us just flying by the pants and, oh, here's your wish list. Well, let's see what we can come up with. Well, since Harry got there and a few of the others, now it's actually into an ICIP where we put it in and there's a plan for the funding that comes out of this, guys. And I watched him work on this in Santa Fe for the last two years and it's about time. And now, if we could get him to work on the capital outlay, how they give that money away, we could be really amazed, okay? But thank you.
Yes, thank you, Harry.
Thank you.
Thanks, Harry.
Mr. Garcia.
Thanks, Harry.
Any questions for Donald on that, on the, on the ICIPs? Go ahead, Harry, make a statement.
I wanna leave. I gotta go. But on your capital outlay, you have like, you have funds that we gave, like for the water ground.
Spend them.
Just a word of wisdom, you guys need to spend them.
Spend them, guys. We gotta spend them.
You know, you know those stays in the pinch.
And they're gonna come back.
In January, if it's not spent or.
They're gonna come back.
You're covered. You're gonna lose it. So, any money that you have, you need to spend.
Thank you, Harry.
Thank you, Mr. Garcia. Appreciate you.
Hey, be safe. Any other questions for Donald? On that one there, I like the way the ICIPs are doing now compared to when I came in in 2006, guys. I really do. It's been a big change.
It actually has to be on the list.
Yeah, it's been a really big change, guys.
Well, we need to apply.
Instead of just going to Santa Fe and saying, please, please, please.
That's news to me.
We gotta apply, okay?
That's news to me.
We're good with that one? We're done there? Everybody's good with that one? The Resolution 121685, Water Project Bridge Loan. Now, these are not bridges for bridges. They're to get us from one loan to the next loan, right? I just wanna make sure.
The federal government's a lot smarter than what we think they are. They're not gonna give you funding until they know you're going to construction. That's basically what this is. They're not gonna give you the $5 million to go to construction until they know you've designed it and are ready to go. So, there's a loan that we get from a small bank in Albuquerque. It's called a bridge loan. They just, they fund the design, which is about 500,000, it's a $5 million project, two of them. And they just, we survive off that loan. Then we get, we're finally granted the construct, the full funding for the project. That funding pays back the RCAC loan, which was the bridge loan, and then we continue with the project into funding, which I think is smart.
Is it paid back in full? Current interest and everything?
Correct. Actually, there's no, there's no interest.
Cherry.
It's just, yeah, it's just a small. Like I said, I think it's smart of the federal government, 'cause otherwise you're giving all this money and who knows, the municipality could only go to design and never go to construction. But you have $5 million tied to the entire project, so it makes sense to me.
I laughed when somebody asked me if we were building more bridges. I said, we've done them all.
Well, we have one, right?
We got one, ma'am.
So, there's one resolution for water and one resolution for wastewater, two separate projects of which you guys are familiar with.
Any questions on the bridge loan for the, for the first one, the water? That one there would be 201685.
That $5 million grant, Donald, that's, that's for future infrastructure, right? Is that what, is that what we're doing?
That's to replace the oldest infrastructure in the city of Grants. The oldest of which is, the majority of it's the, we call it the Loma. That's what I call it.
Yeah.
Santa Fe Avenue.
The Loma.
And this is going to include the upgrade to across the street to where there could be some economic development at the exit on this side of town. We've, like, we've had some businesses come and they've had interest on that exit, La Quinta is what I've heard. Anyway, the reason they couldn't do it is because the infrastructure is not to size, to handle a motel.
The water.
So, anyway, that's part of this first phase is. So, it's not, it's new, but it's, we're replacing the oldest infrastructure in town. Water and wastewater.
No, go ahead. I was gonna say, anything else? Anybody, anybody got anything else?
So, on these amounts, Donald, do we know that's what the design's gonna cost or that's what they're estimating it to be at?
We, we've already executed agreements that include these costs.
Okay.
The exact costs.
Okay.
Anything else? On the first Resolution 201685, what's the pleasure of the council?
I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution 201685 USDA Water Project Bridge Loan.
Second.
I second.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Pavia?
Yes.
Councilor Rodarte?
Yes.
Last item, number eight. This is the wastewater bridge loan. Same thing as the last one, guys, to get us through. And this will improve the wastewater on this end, the old end, to bring.
What do you mean this end?
This end, the west end, all the old, and to get water to the other side of the freeway and.
All the old lines and stuff like?
Yes, all the old wastewater lines. So, so we can handle the stuff coming from Milan and La Quinta or anything else, we might be able to build.
Anything that comes down the road?
Yep. Any questions for Donald on this one, guys?
No, sir.
No? What's the pleasure on the council?
What's the, what's the cost on this one?
589.
Is that 530?
530.
530,000.
Generally, and I hate to use this rule of thumb, 'cause I mean, do you know an engineer that you really trust? I don't know. But anyway, no, but generally, engineers are about 10% of the project. And this is in that area. I've seen them a little higher, I've seen them a little lower. I mean, this is a large project. It's a cost that we don't usually see for an engineer, but it does fall into where it generally, you know, should be, so.
So, what's the timeline as far as like, okay, we get this bridge loan, we have to start paying on it, when?
We, the, once we get the construction funding from USDA or project funding, I keep on saying construction. Once we get the project funding from USDA, when we're at construction, that funding will entirely pay off this loan.
So, are we making, what he's asking is correct, are we making payments on the bridge loan now until then?
No.
No?
No.
There's a, there's a no-bad deal to this.
No. No-brainer, yeah.
Anything else? Pleasure of the council?
I make a motion for Resolution, we accept Resolution 20-1690-USDA Wastewater Project Bridge Loan.
Second.
I second.
Councilor Garcia?
Yes, sir.
Councilor Lucero?
Yes.
Councilor Pavia?
Yes.
Councilor Rodarte?
Yes.
Thank you.
Laura, you got?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor.
I do. Fred Rodarte, Councilor Rodarte brought a citizen concern to us. The citizens that live on Truman Street are concerned about the speed, the traffic on their street. We've worked with them for a couple of years now. We put a, we had a traffic study and.
Which end of Truman? Which end of Truman?
1100 blocks.
It's the 800, 800 block, oh, no, 1100, 1100, sorry. Yeah, it's the very end that curves around to Mesa. So, they noticed a lot of traffic when we had George Hanish closed. That was the first part of it. But two concerns, speed limit and then the amount of traffic. So, they're at the point, we tried to speed hump and they didn't feel like that did much help. So, now they're asking if we would consider closing that road. So, I put a post or I had Chris put a post on Facebook kind of questioning if we close that road, would it impact very many people? And we got about 130-some responses.
Here's one that'll impact.
And, right, and all of them were not wanting us to close that, that they felt like that it's used a lot. So, Fred came up with another idea that I thought was very creative, but he said we could possibly look at creating another parallel access to that area. If we could find a place where there might be a old home that's not, that's abandoned and falling apart, that we might be able to create another thoroughfare, a road parallel to that part of Truman. So, that's something I'm kind of looking at. We identified at least one home. It was a little further west of Truman. I was thinking that it might be better if we did one to the east of Truman or south. I'm not sure which directions, east or, is it south, south? So, we can explore that and see if there's a possibility that might entail purchasing a piece of property and then trying to put in some kind of road. It doesn't have to be necessarily fancy, but it might take some of the traffic congestion off of Truman and give another access to that area.
How many houses are, that we're talking about, four, five?
There's about five.
Two, three, four, five.
Yeah, there's about five there.
So, we're talking about changing all of it for five houses when we got over 100 people that say no.
Right.
Well, we're talking about, there's an abandoned house there on, at the end of Austin.
Fred, we're talking about paving a road and making a new road into an area to benefit five people, five homes. When we're talking about 150 or even more that didn't see Facebook, because I don't do Facebook, never been on Facebook, okay, and I didn't see it, so I didn't know about it. And I'm one of those that's gonna impact. It's my direct line to Walmart. That's the way everybody from that out of town goes to Walmart. So, you're talking about spending roughly 3 million, 2 million to build a new road to benefit five homes.
I don't know. Is that, do you think that that'll be the cost?
I don't think it'll be that much. If we did it ourselves, it would not.
It's right there behind that house that is vacant or, there's nothing there but trees and weeds and stuff and it connects directly to Mesa right there. There's nothing back there.
Somebody owns that property.
Who owns it?
Yeah. I know somebody owns it. That's what Laura was gonna look into is.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't matter which house you come out of the back of it.
Well, do you remember where Paco Sante Esteban lived at the end of Jefferson?
Yes.
It's about two streets over.
Why don't we go look at it tomorrow?
Because Paco lived right at the end of Jefferson.
Yeah, let's go look at it.
That used to be a road that went through and it was blocked off.
They put that, a guardrail.
Is it 'cause of the gas line?
Yeah.
Yeah, well, the, the gas line and there was just, because of the way they brought Mesa Boulevard through, there was no way to put five roads together there.
And this one's a little, about two blocks further, further south from there.
And how is that gonna cut?
It'll come, it'll, it'll hit the road, that Mesa, like the one on Truman. It'll just hit it prior to that. It'll go straight to the road on Mesa. There'll be no other roads there. It'll, it'll just, it'll just be. It'll, it'll just, it'll just be like three roads there going to Mesa. One of them is the, is the major one, which is Mount Taylor. And then the, the next one is...
Wouldn't it be, well, I don't know, we'll look at it.
Well, I know, I know one thing, I made a comment to Laura is, uh, our, our street department, I guess it's a compliment to them, they're doing better with the streets than, uh, than the DOT is doing on Interstate Forty. You get all a bunch of bumps, all they're doing is fixing the roads. They do a good job. Right here on, on Mesa, on West High, they did an extra...
Come on up, chief, come on up and make a comment. We wanna hear what you've gotta say. This is America, baby, especially if it's got something to do with our town.
Put a road there, that way people could, some could come through that.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, um, city manager sent me an email concerning, uh, Councilman Rodarte's, uh, citizen complaint. Uh, Councilman Padilla had done the same thing, made a complaint, uh, let us know about it. And I appreciate that. Um, his, his was on Sergeant and, uh, this one on the eleven hundred block of Truman. So what I started doing myself and patrol started doing is running radar on both Sergeant, which was several weeks before, uh, this, this complaint. On neither street did we find speeders, okay? On Truman, I, I, over the last couple of weeks since I got that email, I've clocked sixty-three vehicles. Between the two speed bumps, because there's two speed bumps, not, not just one, there's two speed bumps there. Between the two speed bumps, people will increase their speed to twenty-five. Now, twenty-five is the speed limit, okay? Twenty-five, if it's not a marked road, marked by, by a speed sign, twenty-five is the default speed limit in our city. So what happens, and that's why I talked to Mr. Padilla about, what happens is people do their twenty-five. Hard, rarely, rarely do they do over that in, in these two instances, uh, that I found. And if it's a mile or two over, between the speed bumps there is where the people will... One was a crotch rocket zoomed up and the other one was a four-wheel drive. The crotch rocket got to twenty-seven and then the truck got to twenty-five. And that's where we go, that's between those two speed bumps. My suggestion, and again, I don't know, I see what you're saying about the design there on Austin and, and, and opening that up, and that's something for council, of course. Uh, I would almost though encourage possibly is put another speed bump or two. Because the design, as you make the turn right there onto Mesa, uh, there's nobody, nobody speeding there because that design is so bad that, uh, that dip there, it causes people to slow down anyway. But between the two speed bumps, uh, if you wanted to add another one there at the cost of twelve hundred, I think, is what I understood, um, maybe, but I, we're not getting speeders. We are getting traffic, um, and there is traffic in that area.
Chief, is there a significant, uh, she, the lady at complaint says that there's semis that go through there.
There was a semi, there was one semi the other day that I stopped, uh, I ended up stopping him on Balsam. His GPS was leading him through there to the Tasty Kitchen. And so, so, yeah, he was like, "I don't know where I'm at. Look, I'm trying to get to Tasty Kitchen," so, yeah. That was that one. So I've never seen a semi going, uh, between Mesa down through Truman. Now, could there be at different times? There could be, but I've never heard that. Matter of fact, when I spoke to all my, uh, patrolmen that day about what I stopped, uh, uh, they were just pretty much surprised also because that's, that is not a zone where you're gonna get people on, or semis coming through.
You know what? Now that you say that, I think there's a way we can, um, log in and, and give directives for the GPS, uh, Google Maps because, uh, we were following an ambulance one time that was transporting my dad to Albuquerque and they went that way. And then when we got to the hospital, I asked them and they said the GPS unit took them that back way. So maybe we need to fix that for one. But I thought the initial complaint was the speeding, but then in talking to the individual, uh, concerned, it was more the traffic.
And there is significant traffic there throughout.
So my fear, if we close that, then we're gonna increase the traffic on, on, um, Washington that turns into Mount Taylor. So they already get quite a bit of traffic, so that's not gonna help anywhere.
And like I said, that road is used mainly by everybody that lives...
In that area?
In that area, all the way up to, to Mount Taylor School. Because that's their direct route to Walmart, guys.
Right.
That's where Jimmy Candelaria lives, right?
Yes, right there on the corner. And I mean, that's, that's just the way it is. It's a road that's in town and...
Do you see that, that I...
People go to Walmart!
The, the triangle piece that's right there, if we're gonna cut that through, um, the guy lives in, uh, Pennsylvania. I would definitely call him. Um, I hear some rumor that, I would just contact him because there might be something going on there.
You're right.
So I think he's looking at selling or something, so I would contact him before we go into further.
And plus, we gotta think about the amount of money we're gonna spend on something like that to benefit five homes, guys. Okay, to benefit five people that are complaining because people drive by their street and they pay taxes to drive them.
The best bet is a flyover.
Well, one of the things...
Santa Fe got that wraparound, yeah.
One of the things that we're, that, that is good is we're addressing our constituents' concerns and that's, uh, according to that lady, uh, Candelaria on there on Truman, she, she has been complaining about that for five years, she says. And, uh, well, what can you say? We're trying to address it the best way to help her.
Anything else, Laura?
No, that's it for me.
Eric, you got anything?
I just go back to the, that ordinance and stuff about getting stuff cleaned up and, and, you know, residential or commercial, you know, everyone just try to do your part as far as trying to get stuff cleaned up. Mr. Windhorse kinda started me on this about five years ago on cleaning stuff up and, and, uh, I helped him out with the, a few. He's had a bunch, but a few of the cleanups around the community and, and the county and whatnot. And thinking back five years ago when I started this, it was like, God, it was pretty gross. And then fast forward, you know, five years from now, um, it's starting to shape up. And, um, so all I'm saying is, if you have a business, please do your part to make it looking a little bit better. Clean the weeds, put some striping, um, put some handicap signs out, whatever it is. Because it is attractive when you do get people coming in through town and saying, "Hey, that, that looks nice." You know, I, I, I maybe wanna put a business here or, or there's some vacant buildings. If it is cleaned up, you never know, you may get that certain person that comes down Route sixty-six and say, "Hell, that's a pretty cool place, you know, I wonder how much they want for it." Because it's clean, it's, uh, Mr. Pines, your, 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 your area there on Jefferson, pretty ugly when we first started, right? Beautiful now, I mean, it's great. I, I hope you get to sell that or do whatever you want with it because it looks nice. You, it, uh, it, it increased the market value. So that, to me, uh, if I was coming through town, I would be calling you. You know, I'm like, "Hey, that's, that's a cool spot right there, you know, that might be good for some apartments." And then I would do my research, you know, I, Mrs. Fletcher over there at the, at the county building and, and Laura have done some research on, on, uh, properties here and, and, and we just don't have enough housing, uh, apartments and stuff like that, so, I mean, that, that, that's attracting. That, that property's really nice, sir. And, uh, uh, so I'm just saying, clean it up, you know, and, uh, there's stuff down Santa Fe, um, if it's cleaned up, you never know. You might get that Chick-fil-A one day because it was clean and it, it looked attractive, but...
Or maybe Long John Silver's.
Long John Silver's, you know, whatever, but, you know, I, I say go down Santa Fe. The mayor went down there and, you know, obviously he counted forty-some buildings. Um, and it's not easy to start a business. I mean, I started one four years ago and it's tough. Um, but the first thing I did to my business is I cleaned it up. And, um, all I'm saying is, uh, let's just continue that trend because we want Grants, New Mexico to look nice. We want to attract people. We wanna make money here. We wanna take the crime out of here. If stuff is cleaned up, the crime statistically, Google it, it goes down. Fixing broken windows, chief, right?
Broken windows, baby.
Yes, sir.
Did you read it?
I read half of it.
It's a good book.
Very good book.
And it, I guarantee it works. If it work in New York, it'll work anywhere.
Yes, sir.
Do we see?
Yes, sir.
Yes, go ahead, please. Steve?
Mr. Pines was, uh, saying, he's indicating what's the difference between, the difference between a vacant building and something that's derelict. And I agree, it's, we can't just, with vacant buildings, they're, they're, they're looking sharp, they're closed, they're boarded, whatever needs to happen, the owner's using them for other purposes or whatever. But what happens is, what I've, in the two years that I've been chief of police, and we started the broken windows theory, uh, program, um, we're getting, we are getting, uh, numerous, uh, squatters that are doing heroin, drugs, they're starting fire in these houses and buildings, um, they're stealing the copper out of them. Um, and, and what happens on several of these that we've done, we can't get a victim because the victim is a bank in Delaware or a bank, uh, up in Vermont. And so we can't even get a human being on the phone. And so, so consequently, these people go in charge because we don't have a victim. And so we can't say the city's the victim because even though it destroys the appearance of our city, I mean, I'm talking, it used to be a really good neighborhood, up on, down Orty, there's a vacant building and we had squatters there and this bank won't answer. And so I think, and I, and I'm not trying to sway the council as far as giving my opinion, but my personal observation as chief of police is that if we can get these banks, these business, uh, businesses, that these people, these owners, not just to commercial, although commercial is an issue, but also to the homes where these houses lay, lay derelict, um, we won't have the, the infestation of the drug addicts going and camping out or destroying. And therefore, uh, each of your property values, you that own homes, will go up. We had an issue, we had a problem home on, at the six hundred block of Clovis.
Yeah, I know.
And it was bringing down the property value. We were getting a gentleman complaining. And when I came as chief, we began to address that issue. Rouse Street, eight hundred blocks of Jackson, eight oh five Santa Marina, I can name so many houses where drug activity was happening that that's gone down. Some of these that are vacant, but not just vacant, but become derelict. When the, when the building is allowed to go on repair, when it falls into disrepair, then you get the people coming. And so I'm just wanting to say that, Mr. Councilman, uh, that's, that's true statistics. I don't, I'm not trying to cost any business owner or homeowner more money, but I'll, I know one thing for certain, when the city takes more of a, a progressive stance on, uh, we need to at least try to open these buildings or open these up or, or have the business owner bring repair to this torn up, destroyed building. You mentioned the burnt out house there on, uh, Anderson and, and Washington. How long will the owner let it lie like that? And so I get it. What if he can't? Then, then my, 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 my personal opinion would be, we will work with you, uh, to raise it to the ground and, and clean up your property so that you can do something with that. Because it's, it's, that building will now attract undesirables to that neighborhood. And it's an old neighborhood. It is. And, but you know, there's folks that have been in that neighborhood since forever and they don't want their home to go down in value. They want their home to look nice. And so some of the older people in town, um, have wonderful yards and it'll be like this little oasis in the middle of a bunch of houses that are falling to disrepair. And you drive by and you can tell there's, there's some folks, they're retirees or whatever, that really care. And so I think as a city, it wouldn't be wrong for us, but the PD's doing all we can do. We've begun to work with, uh, Mr. Windhorse two years ago when I first came on. Because we know sometimes this guy's doing drugs, dealing drugs, but we don't have enough to get in there and deal with that. And their, their property, their house is filled with junk. We go with Mr. Windhorse to deal with them and as we're there, we get, now we've got contact with this guy, with these people and we're beginning to deal with it. So I just wanna say that to council, it's not any, I, I realize COVID nineteen and, and the undue burden that we don't wanna cause business owners or ultimately property owners anyway, but honestly, um, we can't say that, uh, uh, we're, our town is doing bad merely because nobody wants to move here. If, if, I was talking to a councilman from, from, uh, Belen, uh, one of the, I'm sorry, not a councilman, but a, uh, city, a county commissioner. And he was bemoaning that there are four families in Belen that, uh, did not want to improve that town and get rid of some of their buildings and sell them. So they asked high prices on all that. And so consequently, Los Lunas has major industry coming in and Belen has fallen by the wayside and it's only a few miles south. And so I would, I would hope, when I came here, I gave the promise to the city manager when she hired me, that I would do all I can to bring, uh, the crime down. And each of you got a packet that showed that in the last two years, violent crime has come down by half. Uh, uh, property crime has come down by half. And my point is, we are working all we can. And I know the council on this, I'm not here at all, at all, as any indictment towards anybody here. What I'm trying to say is, I would hope going into the future that we, as a community, realize that we want to entice these businesses to our town and we're not gonna do it by saying this property is not gonna be open for whatever reason. We have to try. I would, and I, and I'm not, I, I was, I'm not trying to be political. This is just my thought as ch- chief of police. Um, I think, I think that, uh, we're going there, uh, we're, we're pushing forward as a PD to reduce the crime. And, uh, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thanks, chief.
Go ahead, Barbara.
Thank you, chief.
I should mention that I really love Grants and our community, the people here. However, um, we have been promoting tourism since nineteen eighty-five, but it's never caught on because we wanna be miners, we wanna be ranchers, we want to work at the power plant. Those are the things that, and this is bringing money outside into our community. But we are not addressing some of the things that affect tourism and promoting tourism. For example, my son lives in a little town called Mustang, Oklahoma. And he visits about once a year. And there's a property on Santa Fe, on the south side of the street, that at one time I heard it was going to be converted into storage units. It's been vacant for years. And he says, "Mom, why, why doesn't the city do anything about that? Why is it?" And I can't answer that. And he said, "You know, this would never happen in our little community. They would, they would not let this happen."
What is the industry in that, in that community? What do they do, what do they do to make a living there?
Well, a lot more than what we have done, but we're on...
What is it? I mean, is it mining, is it ranching? It's some type of industry, right?
Well, they're surrounded...
They don't live on tourism.
Planting. No, they don't. But they are surrounded by, they're close to Interstate Forty, but they're surrounded by Oklahoma City. So there's a, there's a change there. But, uh, Mr. Padilla, you had addressed at one of the city council meetings having gone to Taos. Taos is a tourist center. And the things that they can do in Taos are the things that we have not tried to do here. And all I'm saying is, here's a building that has been abandoned for years and years and years and years and we're not doing anything about it. And it's right on Santa Fe Avenue. Right as people are coming in, they see this building and it's not being addressed. We do need to look at some options for bringing people into our community and businesses into our community. Cleanliness is part of it, especially if we can get crime down. That's an issue in a lot of this, the little, uh, areas around town. There is a crime problem, but if we keep...
We are driving crime down. You just heard the chief say that we knocked it down by fifty percent.
That's right, we are.
I mean, we're trying, Barbara, and we're trying to bring businesses in. We're trying like really hard, okay? I mean, believe it or not, we're not just blowing it off. We all sit on economic developments, we go to COG meetings. We are actually trying to get people into this town. What are they gonna come here for?
Well, we need to keep working at it.
We are, believe me.
We need to keep working at it.
That's why we sit up here. That's why I do, anyway.
Anyway, thank you so much for giving me this opportunity again to speak. But we do need to focus on some things that are going to be bringing more people spending their money in our community. Thank you.
Eric, you got anything else?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Rick, you got anything?
Yeah, I had a citizen call me regarding some work that was done of roadwork on Inwood.
Yes.
Yeah, and it looks like the work they did was, is not working. So there's pulling, some pulling of water on their street, so.
Okay.
If we can get Mark to go take a look at that. And that's all I have.
Okay.
Fred Padilla?
I don't have any comments.
None? Fred Rotarte?
I'm good.
Only recorded.
I'm good.
Oh, my God, I got a copy. First one is, I was looking for the ordinance that we supposedly passed in two thousand and six, two thousand and seven, somewhere in there for raising the garbage bills to tear down buildings. Mr. Windhorse couldn't find it. Melissa couldn't find it. I can't find it.
I have it.
You do have it?
I have it.
I would like a copy of that. And please give each one of the councilors a copy of that because that's our biggest thing to deal with residential buildings that are out of deal that the chief was talking about, to tear those down. Okay? And I believe in that ordinance, it sets money aside that is specifically used to tear down buildings and nothing else. That money cannot be moved. I knew we had passed it, I just couldn't find it.
We've already spent what we collected on that, but we've continued each year, except for this year because of the economy, to budget for demolitions. So last year.
How much is it averaging a year that it collects?
In the way the ordinance was, is that for three years, two thousand and seven, eight, nine, we raised our trash collection fee by twelve percent.
It's twelve percent a year, wasn't it?
Twelve percent a year. And then after that, it would raise by the CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index. And that's what we raise our water by as well. But we don't, we've, we've spent all of the money that was, you know, initially gathered, but we still have been budgeting the last few years to do demolitions out of the utility billing.
Okay, but that money that was set aside, I mean, that money's still being set aside out of that ordinance, right? Because it should be, it's in the ordinance, that that money be set aside and only used for building teardowns, not moved anywhere else. And my point being there is we shouldn't be spending from the general fund for this. We should be spending only from that fund. And whatever that fund raises, whatever it is, because it's like thirty-six percent we raised the garbage bills by. So it's got to be a very significant amount when we've got roughly thirty-five hundred, forty-five hundred people paying water bills and garbage bills, including our, our businesses. That comes out to a pretty good chunk of money every year. That money needs to be split on the side every single year in a separate account, whatever. And that money only be used out when we're done, we're done for that year. Not dipping into the, to the general fund, the utility fund or any other fund because we specifically set up a fund to tear down buildings. And that's what it should be used for and nothing else, guys. So if you would give us all a copy of that so that we can all take a look at it and see where we're at. Because I'm not, I mean, I'm not comfortable spending out of the general fund to tear down buildings. I'm not comfortable spending out of the utility.
It's not coming out of the general fund.
I'm not comfortable spending out of the utility fund. It, it was done to set up a special fund to tear down buildings only, all buildings. And that's what that money needs to be set aside and used for, okay? And the second thing I've had, you know, since about, since I made mayor, I've taken several threats, okay? But lately, they've increased. Two weeks ago Friday, I had a very specific one. They told me they were going to get me between City Hall and my truck when they know I'm not armed. So for all you people out there, notice, I do have my gun on tonight. And you will not catch me without it again, okay? The chief of police and the sheriff recommended that I wear body armor. And I have it in my truck, okay? I'm not comfortable wearing body armor. I used to gear up to extract idiots from their cells for riots and for transports. And now I'm to the point where I have to gear up to come to City Hall. It's ridiculous, guys. That's where we're at, okay? I have no confidence in her. I do not trust her. And that's where we're at. I still want her resignation, guys. Because now I'm receiving threats. And this threat was very specific. If you keep effing with Laura, we're going to get you between City Hall and your truck when you're not armed. Those were the exact words that were said to me. Came in on a restricted number. And here's the one that really gets me, guys. I was on my way to City Hall when this happened. My wife received the call from restricted number two. My wife doesn't answer any calls like that. And the only reason I answered the call is because that's the way Steve Pearce's calls come into me, is restricted. That's the only reason I answered that call is because I figured maybe it was Steve Pearce or somebody else like that. Because when I get calls from those people, it comes in restricted, okay? Tony and them figured it's a burner phone, whatever. Okay, I've had a lot of them. I hope you get COVID and die. I hope a truck runs you over, okay? But this was the first one telling me they're going to get me. So you won't catch me without a firearm again, guys, never. And if I'm not allowed to take a firearm in, then I probably won't go in. Period. That's all I got.